Good evening, everyone. Six o'clock, so it's time for the August meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. I have called it to order, so it's time for the roll call.
Ms. Akers?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schrader?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. Agenda approval. Staff, are we good for what we have? Okay. I need a motion for approval of the agenda as published.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, second.
I've got a motion and a second. We'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Minute approval. Minutes approval. We had the, for the regular meeting and also for the work session on the 18th. Any additions, corrections, changes, et cetera? Need a motion?
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve the minutes from July 18, 2018, for both the regular meeting and the work session.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. Okay. I'm sorry?
One abstention.
One abstention. Okay. Let the record show, so show it. This evening, we have two public hearings and a decision item. And I will, let me go through our procedures for public hearings before we get started. Our public hearings consist of several sections. First of all, we'll hear from the applicant. Then we'll hear a report from staff. Once the staff report is finished, we'll open the public hearing to input from our citizens. We'll ask you to limit yourself to three minutes. And I got the timer, and it beeps. If you need, if you think you need more than three minutes, you can have someone else cede the time to you for a total of nine minutes, but no more than nine. And I'm sure that it shouldn't take that long. Before we start the public hearing portion of the Harvest of Ohio, which is our first item, I'll have a couple of more instructions for you. So without further ado, shall we go ahead?
This is case number PC 18-10, conditional use on an application filed by Thomas McCash, 6864 Fallen Timber Drive, Dublin, Ohio, 43017. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for a medical marijuana retail dispensary to be located at 4370 Tonawana Trail. The property is further described as Book Three, Page Seven, Parcel 170, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here representing our applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Joseph R. Miller, Boree Sater Seymour &amp; Peas, 52 East Gay Street, Columbus, here on behalf of the applicant, Harvest of Ohio LLC. Good evening to the members of the Planning Commission, city staff, council. We appreciate your time this evening, and we would ask you that you indulge us, if you would, for a presentation that may be a little longer than you're used to. We'll keep it moving and hopefully informative. We think it's important that the members of the commission, the members of the public who have been so kind to attend here tonight, understand the business of Harvest of Ohio LLC, the regulatory framework of the state of Ohio, the benefits of medicinal marijuana, and the way in which Harvest conducts its operations, that it can be a tremendous asset to this community. We want to take the time to explain those things to you and then address for you each of the specific factors in your code for approval of a conditional use and the data and evidence that we believe very clearly supports approval, as well as other considerations that this body, city, and the city and council must consider. So just to set the table, if you will, we will give you that overview of Harvest. The CEO, Steve White, is here from Arizona this evening to address that issue, as well as answer any questions you have along the way. He'll likewise give you an overview of the Ohio dispensary program. And we've brought with us the Medical Director of Harvest, Dr. William Trout, who will discuss with you the real benefits of medical cannabis that Harvest provides in a community under very strict codes, policies, and procedures, as well as Mr. McCash and I would address for you those conditional use factors in your code and other considerations for this body. As I stated, we are more than happy to answer questions. Harvest is proud of the services it provides and the way in which it conducts business. We want to make sure you have all that information. So to begin the presentation, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. White to address his company's overview and the Ohio dispensary program.
Thank you, Chair, Commission. My name is Steve White. I'm the CEO of Harvest. We are a medical cannabis company, currently operational, or currently have licenses in seven states. We hold 37 licenses. In the very near future, we'll be making announcements that'll bring that number up to 12 states. We have focused solely to date on medical cannabis and medical cannabis states. We have not operated, nor do we have any licenses in recreational states. We are a company that was formed in 2011, 2012 by a group of individuals. You had contractors, engineers, researchers, and lawyers who got together because there was a statute that we thought, well, we frankly thought that group of people would be best suited to run one of these businesses and best suited to be awarded one of these licenses in the state of Arizona, which is where we started. Not only do we perform the basic services that a medical cannabis company does, that being cultivation, light manufacturing, or processing, in addition, we do run retail stores. But we also have a number of things that make Harvest unique. The first of which is we have a research wing, the Medical Marijuana Research Institute, which to date has published two papers in peer-reviewed journals. In addition to that, we have founded a 501(c)(3) that's dedicated to help families dealing with pediatric epilepsy. We have also, we have a rich history of giving back to the community and other charitable causes as well. In addition, we have a full-time outreach staff. That staff is dedicated to holding community events, interacting with the medical community, and working with other interest groups where we see a lot of patients from, like the Epilepsy Foundation or other such organizations. And just so you know, when we're going through this presentation, the actual pictures, our actual pictures of our facilities to give you an idea of how we, how we present in a community. What you won't find, I think importantly with us, is you won't find any of the cultural symbols that you typically, that you maybe historically have found, or the stereotypes associated with medical cannabis. So you're not going to find green crosses. You're not going to find marijuana leaves. You'll rarely find the color green anywhere, actually. So what you'll see is things like just the name Harvest outside. It's our belief that if we do a good job, people know, people who need our services will know who we are and those who don't, don't, don't need to know, frankly. So that's also a picture of an interior of one of our facilities in Arizona. But it's important that we've gone from state to state to state in that it's allowed us to develop policies and procedures where we effectively adopt the strictest procedures from each state, because we don't want to have different policies and procedures state to state. So basically, we adopt and we amend and we adapt as we move forward. So we are getting better. We are getting tighter. We are getting stricter over time. One of the things that's always important, people always ask about the security of our facilities, I think, I think the best way that we can speak to how well we've done there is we have literally, over the course of many states, we've served hundreds of thousands of patients. We have transported literally tons of marijuana products, and we've done so without a single security incident of any kind. So that's done both because we have, you know, states do a very good job of outlining what it is that we're required to have in these facilities, how we're required to transport. But we also have internal processes that are very effective as well. The Ohio program is a unique program in that it is actually governed, the program itself is divided and governed by a couple of different governing bodies. Tonight, we're talking about a retail facility that's governed by the State Board of Pharmacy, which is probably the appropriate place for that to land. That is not normal, however. It is, it is only a couple of states where that's true. It is a program where people can, you have to understand what it is that we are, you know, proposing to do and what it is that this program proposes to do. We are going to operate a store that allows people who have been to a doctor, and that doctor has said you have a serious medical condition that fits on a list, that the legislature and the governor said qualifies you for medical cannabis. If all of that's true, and you go through the processes required by the state, you are allowed to walk into the store. So that is, it is not something that is open to the public. It is not something where you will see people congregating or loitering. It is not like that. It is a very strict program, limited to people with very specific needs. These awards, these, for the retail facilities were given out in June. The expectation is that we will be operational by December. It is a very tight timeline, which is why we're here before you today. As I mentioned, Ohio is a very strict program. It is one of the strictest programs in the country, and it does have a quite extensive list of different things that doctors can certify or recommend medical cannabis for. Those are listed on this slide. They're also found in the, in the Ohio statute. For a discussion about medical cannabis, its history, and how Harvest delivers medical cannabis to the country, I'll turn it over to Dr. William Trout.
Hello. My name is Dr. William Trout, and I get the pleasure of discussing the benefits of medical cannabis with you today. I'd like to start by talking a little bit about the terminology of cannabis, and we really can't get a full understanding of that with discussing the history or the use of cannabis in this country. Obviously, you hear me using that word cannabis. That is the botanically accepted name for this plant. Marijuana is actually a common term that came about here in the United States in the early 1900s, specifically for the purposes of prohibition. Cannabis, actually, a lot of people don't realize this. It's becoming a little more common knowledge, but cannabis was actually our main cash crop in this country, right up until the late 1930s. Everything was made out of this plant in this country. First Levi Strauss jeans were cannabis, made from the cannabis fiber. Our first American flag was cannabis, made from the cannabis fiber. The first draft of our constitution written on cannabis paper. All the newspapers in this country were cannabis. The boats that brought us here to the New World, all the rope, cannabis. The sails, cannabis. In fact, that term canvus comes from the word cannabis. So they couldn't really tell the farmers they were getting ready to make their main cash crop illegal, so hence the word marijuana, which is used now more for the psychoactive uses of, of the plant. Again, that causes the euphoria. The medicinal uses, which also provides people a lot of relief of, of symptoms. We had a lot of medicinal products in this country right around the turn of the century, cannabis products as well. Companies like Parkin Davis, Eli Lilly, and that's an example right there of a liquid cannabis extract made by Molford Company, which is now a subsidiary of Merck. And we've got a lot of products in the dispensary that are very similar to these products right here. This was part of our USP pharmacopoeia in the country until the late 1940s. So again, now we use that term hemp more for the industrial uses of the plant, fiber, clothing, some medical products as well, but the big distinction there is if it's called hemp, it's still cannabis, but it's either a product or a type of cannabis that just does not have the ability to cause that euphoria or those psychoactive effects. And if it's called marijuana, again, it potentially has the ability to cause those psychoactive effects, but it's all cannabis. It's the cannabis plant. The endocannabinoid system, this has to do with how cannabis works in our bodies, and I think it's really important to understand how it works. It helps us understand the breadth of it or why it is good for so many different conditions. Up until 1990, we really had no idea how this plant was working. We thought it was just increasing our endorphins, and that's why people felt the euphoric effects. However, it turns out that we've got these very specific receptors in our body that cannabis activates. We've got these, what we call cannabinoid I receptors in the brain and nervous system that are there to help balance out the electrical activity of our, our brain and nervous system. And we're finding out that that's why it's so effective for helping with seizure disorders. And we've got another subset of these cannabinoid receptors, cannabinoid II, that are out throughout our immune system. And we're finding out that's why cannabis is so helpful in autoimmune and inflammatory conditions. This endocannabinoid system that we now call it, again, named after the cannabis plant because that's how we identified it, if nothing else, over the last several decades, this cannabis plant has taught us an incredible amount about our human physiology based on the way it works. It works different than most other medicines. So it turns out this endocannabinoid system also touches all of our other systems. It can stimulate our feel-good hormones, our, the dopamine serotonin levels. It stimulates our natural endorphins as well, helps to regulate our sex hormones, buffers our stress response. In medicine, we call this homeostasis. The endocannabinoid system helps to keep the body in balance with its environment. And I think this also helps to explain this phenomenon that's going on with medical cannabis right now. We're up to 30 states that have medical cannabis laws, nine states that have full adult use of cannabis. And the reason these laws are happening now, or these changes are happening now, is we are understanding how this medicine works inside our system. And at this point, it's absolutely ridiculous to say that this plant has no medicinal value based on what we know about how it interacts with, with our biochemistry. I'd like to look at some of the medical literature that we're seeing coming out as well to, to get an idea of the potential that we're seeing for this medicine in the future. We've always known that it's very good at helping people manage symptoms such as pain, nausea, and vomiting, just help them feel better when, when they're really dealing with severe medical conditions. But some of the things that we're, we're seeing more specifically on how it can, can help with the landscape of medicine as we know it, first of all, we all know that we have an opioid crisis that we're dealing with. All of our communities are being touched by that. In fact, overdose on opiate medicines is now the number one cause of accidental death in young adults in the United States. So this is a serious concern in the medical community. The interesting thing that we're seeing is that the states that have medical cannabis laws, and instantly, this is a journal article out of the Journal of American Medical Association, 2014. What we're seeing is the states that have medical cannabis laws, the lethal overdose rate on opiate medicines has decreased by over 25 percent. That is huge.
This is not a public hearing yet, please. Let's let our, let's let our.
We went beyond the three minutes.
He's, he's not a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Decreased by over 25 percent. And again, that is credible, incredible. What we're seeing is that many of the primary care physicians and the pain management physicians are now referring their patients over to Harvest as an alternative. And I can't tell you how many physicians are reaching out to us and letting us know that, how excited they are that there is another tool in the toolbox to help with these patients that are having these opiate concerns. And it's also an important time to talk about the safety of cannabis. In the 5,000-year written history of medical cannabis use on this planet, we do not have one confirmed lethal overdose on medical cannabis. That's incredible, and it makes it a wonderful, safe alternative to many of the pharmaceuticals that patients are, are using. And with that being said, the psychoactive part of cannabis is still very powerful, and it absolutely needs to be respected for that. And education is, is the biggest piece of that puzzle to make sure people get the best benefit out of it. So the main reason people use cannabis when they're dealing with cancer is to help palliate symptoms, help them feel better, help with pain, help with the nausea and vomiting that goes with the side effects of chemotherapy. And the ability to inhale cannabis and have it hit the bloodstream immediately in two to five minutes is incredible for, for these patients that are dealing with these very severe symptoms of, of nausea and vomiting. However, we've known that cannabis kills cancer cells since the 70s, and we're getting a lot of great research now coming out of other countries, Spain, Italy, Israel, showing that these cannabinoids absolutely have anti-cancer properties to them. And that's where the research is headed, is may this medicine be a great adjunct for the treatment of cancer, not just to help palliate symptoms. And I can't tell you how many people that have told me that they've changed their mind about cannabis after they've had a spouse, a parent come down with cancer and watched them dealing with those debilitating side effects, and again, what cannabis has, has done for them. This one came out of the Current Pharmaceutical Design 2014, therapeutic potential of cannabinoids and neurodegenerative disorders. I think this was the big turning point for cannabis when we started to find this out. And what we found is that these cannabinoids are great antioxidants, they're anti-inflammatory, they can cross the blood-brain barrier and treat inflammation in the brain and the spinal cord. And on top of that, we found that they are neuroprotective. They actually help to protect brain cells. So all that stuff we've heard about smoking pot killing brain cells is just absolutely not true, and I believe it looks like it is just the opposite, that these cannabinoids are quite protective. And as a result of that, we're seeing a lot of patients with neurodegenerative conditions like Alzheimer's disease, Parkinson's disease, ALS, multiple sclerosis that are gravitating to cannabis to get those anti-inflammatory benefits and, and again, hopefully slow the progression or even prevent these types of disease processes. There are many different types of cannabis or strains of cannabis with a lot of different constituents in them, and some very special constituents we call cannabinoids. We named them after the plant because they are found so uniquely and so abundantly in just this plant. We just don't see them in nature otherwise. The main cannabinoids we talk about are THC, tetrahydrocannabinol, and CBD, cannabidiol. THC is the one that provides those psychoactive effects, which gives people a lot of just relief of symptoms, again, pain, nausea, help with sleep, stimulate appetite. But then there's CBD, and actually, there's up to 100 of these cannabinoids and terpenoids. We believe they're all working together to provide the greatest benefit. But cannabidiol specifically is a non-psychoactive cannabinoid, does not cause the euphoric effects, but has a wonderful potential to help with inflammation, pain, seizure disorders as well. So there's a lot of medicines at the dispensary that don't have the psychoactive effects, and we get many patients that are using those specifically for those purposes. However, education is very, very important for patients and the medical community to get the best benefit out of it. I host new patient orientations at the dispensary, the dispensary specifically in Arizona, on a monthly basis to help provide more education for, for patients. And it's interesting to see the demographics. Some people have concerns that these dispensaries will bring that, you know, that cultural aspect to, of cannabis to them. 90 percent of the individuals that come to my new patient orientations are seniors that want to use this medicine as an alternative to the pharmaceuticals, that their physicians are recommending they do it as well. The other part is staff training. I'm responsible for providing training to, to the staff at the dispensaries, and that is very, very important. First of all, that they know their role. The last thing you want is a 20-year-old kid at the dispensary playing doctor, right? So the most important thing is that they understand that they're there just to provide good education on the products that we have at the dispensary to, to help people make the, the best decisions for themselves. But again, that education is such a key component to people getting the best benefit from it. And then to, to finish off, we are part of the medical landscape. We're part of the medical community. Again, that's what I do, is I interface with physicians that are recommending their patients with groups like the Epilepsy Foundation, friends of, of Parkinson's. So again, that is absolutely the correct way to, to look at the Harvest dispensaries. We are a portion of the medical community and being embraced as it. Thank you so much for your time.
And so, thank you, Dr. Trout. And so, Mr. McCash and I would like to address for you then the actual regulations under which Harvest must already operate and how they complement your factors for a conditional use. The state of Ohio has set forth, as you've heard, an extensive framework and dispensary rules that not only complement, they actually already enforce some things that your code is seeking to have. For instance, as you'll see there, the site must already be more than 500 feet from community addiction services providers, schools, churches, libraries, playgrounds, or parks. The security that we've had to demonstrate to the state is fully to their satisfaction. A security plan was presented and accepted by the State Board of Pharmacy and fully compliant with all of the state regulations. Those things are already in place, thanks to the state of Ohio and the strict, strict code of enforcement that they've put into place. The regs do then say that the applicant should provide evidence, and we have, through a signed form by your zoning inspector, that such a site would be in compliance with any local ordinances, rules, or regulations we think we're going to provide, and have provided additional evidence to support that here tonight. I'll let Mr. McCash address the, the site itself and the existing zoning in place.
Thank you. The, the existing site contains a single-story building. It's approximately 3,000 square feet, just a little under 3,000 square feet. It was originally constructed, as I understand it, as a convenience store, but it was then converted to a, an office, a plumbing, I don't know if you call him plumbing supplier, plumbing contractor's office. There was an addition done onto the front of it, about five and a half feet, that took the, the existing face of the convenience store and moved it out towards the street, that five and a half feet. Its current situation is that it does need some maintenance on it. There's doors on the outside, I was being kind on the, on the maintenance piece. It needs some, some various painting, the site itself, the, the paving needs some help. There's fencing along the northern side, a brick wall that needs help, needs taken down and fixed on it. So there's a considerable amount of work that's, that is needed on the site itself. Harvest is planning on investing approximately $500,000 into just major upgrades, and that's above and beyond the purchase price of purchasing the building. It's a complete remodel of the interior. It's just not simply moving into the existing facility. There was actually, as part of the regulations with the state, we had to put together a floor plan to show how various different components were laid out, how different elements from security standpoint were all set up in there, and that was turned into the state. And they've reviewed that as part of their review process, and we're held to that plan. We can't change that plan around without getting some pretty significant variances and hardship issues from the, from the state itself. But that plan is, is in essence fixed from that standpoint. We've met with staff after our, briefly after our application, is, as, they'd indicated, when they issued these dispensary licenses, they were told they had to be open in six months. That was a very quick process. Obviously, we had to file quickly for the, to get on your agenda for here this evening. We met with staff, went through different components. We've amended the, the site plan to reflect some of their comments and conditions and concerns that they had, and that's added additional cost to the, to the overall project, that they're, they're willing to invest in that. Again, it's significant site work that's going into this project, site improvements as far as the exterior, upgrading the, the exterior image, painting it, making sure that it's clean, cleaning up the site itself, taking it to a level that is comparable with other commercial properties in the area. The nursing facility across the street just did a significant addition to, to its facility. So they put a major investment into that, that property. The property to the south, the, I believe it's a, a accounting office, they maintain that property. They put, put money into that investment. This particular building is kind of gone by the wayside as far as the commercial area that's around it. So Harvest's impact in putting money into it is going to bring that back into a value comparable to the other facilities in the other buildings, from a, a value of the property standpoint. As far as the zoning, this site is Zone B2, Community Business District. In looking at those regulations, obviously, you have put medical marijuana dispensaries into a conditional use, but this medical marijuana dispensary is really no different than a drugstore. They're dispensing a drug. It may be one drug, but it's a drug. So it's similar to a drugstore. It's similar to a holistic health center, a medical clinic. You've, you've all heard over the past history, these pain clinics where the opioids, with an opioid problem that's come out. Medical clinic, the medical laboratory services, those are all very similar to what the, this particular facility is. So it's not any different than what's already permitted in the zoning classification. The only difference is because it's the medical marijuana, a lot of cities have been putting it into a conditional use. Some haven't. Some of them, matter of fact, for City of Columbus, we have one that's in, going in City of Columbus. It's a straight zone. It's not a conditional use. They just considered another retail store, another facility that we're doing in, in another location. It's the same thing. It's a straight zoning. It's considered a- it's a straight zoning, it's considered a drugstore, and it goes through as a drugstore. So they don't differentiate because of the type of drug, they simply say it falls into these categories, it's simply a straight zone piece that's on it. As far as the application process through the City of Beaver Creek, your statute basically says that it shall be permitted under the following guidelines. One of those guidelines is that we are not within that 500 feet of the boundary of schools, religious assemblies, public libraries, public playgrounds, or public parks. We meet that. We had to meet that to get the provisional license from the state of Ohio. So we meet at least your minimum standard that you already have in your code for approval. And your code says "shall," it uses that mandatory, doesn't say "may," it says "shall." So we believe that at the minimum, we meet your minimum standards that are on that. As we go through the conditional use approvals, the second provision in your conditional use standards is that we don't have a substantial or material detrimental effect on surrounding properties. Uses the term "substantial" and "material." We believe that what we're doing and what we're doing to the upgrades of the property actually are a benefit to the surrounding properties, they're not detrimental to that. We're bringing this property up to a better quality and a better aesthetic in the community itself and in the surrounding area than what it is now. As far as Item C, dealing with traffic counts and traffic volumes, we don't know what the future development in this area is going to be, so it's hard to say what future traffic, and that's what this particular condition talks about, it talks about traffic volumes and future development in the community. It's hard to say what's going to happen on that. It's hard to say what the traffic patterns and the traffic flow may come from some future development. The town center that's just on the south side of this property itself may not have been originally planned in long-term planning with the City of Beaver Creek, but it came in and that changes the traffic flow and the dynamic of the community itself. So we believe that the current traffic patterns, the current traffic flows, the roadways, the arterials and stuff are sufficient to meet this particular use and how people would actually get to this property and leave this property itself. If you wanted to go through this?
Well, certainly, as far as taking those factors in turn, the proposed dispensary is located in a district where it may be commercially permitted, that first factor. It is Zone B2, and you have established that in your code as a commercial use. If we looked at, excuse me, the proposed dispensary, as Mr. McCash appropriately stressed, it is permitted unless you find, based on the evidence before you, that it will have a substantial, not just detrimental effect, a substantial and material detrimental effect on surrounding properties, and we believe it will be actually of benefit, that it will not have a substantially negative impact on or substantially conflict with the surrounding properties. And let me explain specifically what we mean by that, expanding upon the evidence that Mr. White and Mr. McCash have already provided. Namely, to reiterate, we recognize the property is in need of a serious facelift, and we're prepared to invest approximately a half million dollars into doing just that, exterior and interior improvements, to bring it to the quality and grade of other commercial uses around it. As far as the remainder of the neighborhood, the properties in the area, there's a University of Wisconsin study that actually shows, it came out just last year, that marijuana sales, and certainly here medicinal marijuana in a controlled setting, would have a positive impact on the value of properties in the vicinity of the dispensaries. And so I think the evidence that's coming to us as a society, as this becomes more common in 30 states medicinal marijuana, it's yielding the idea that this is, in fact, is like any other retail and not detrimental to property values, but instead, in a case like we have here, where a substantial investment is going to be made in the property, it's being done by an operator in seven states who operates at a very high and professional level, that it's far from a substantial and material detriment, but instead a benefit to properties within the area. I would add to that specifics as it relates to Harvest and its operations on the locations, and why you can't find that there will actually be a material or substantial detrimental effect on surrounding properties. First, there will be extensive security and surveillance systems in place. Again, this is, I'll say it again, the state of Ohio doing some of the work for you already. We have operated dispensaries, Harvest has, in numerous states, over 100,000 transactions moving tons of cannabis, as it was described, without a single security or safety incident in any of those states. Furthermore, loitering and medical cannabis use on-site are strictly prohibited. I can't stress this enough for you and the people in this room. Loitering and medical cannabis use on-site is strictly prohibited by state law. We are subject to inspections unannounced at any time by the Ohio State Board of Pharmacy. Our license can be revoked without a hearing for on-site medical cannabis use. That simply won't be happening on this site. We will have security personnel, who are well-trained, as Dr. Trout explained, monitor the premises and the parking areas for just this. And again, turning to recent studies, because that's what we have to go on, as this becomes more prevalent in many states, the literature and the studies say that the existence of dispensaries actually reduces crime in the area in which they are, because of the surveillance, because of the controlled setting. And we've quoted for you at least one study from just earlier this year in the Institute of Labor Economics Journal, "Dispensaries Help Reduce Crime By Reducing Vacant Buildings And Putting More Security In These Areas." That's exactly what will be on-site here. Likewise, there has been studies published within the Economic Journal that suggests that, the evidence suggests that introduction of medical marijuana laws leads to a decrease in crime. And the opposite is also true, where dispensaries are closed, and those improvements, and that surveillance, and that security goes away, that's what can result in an increase in crime. And that's why we can say to you with confidence, both based on our operations in other states and what is known to be true throughout the country, as this becomes more common, this cannot and will not present a detrimental effect in the neighborhood. And I would also, further addressing these factors, say to you, the dispensary will not be in conflict with surrounding properties. I think Mr. White described well that Harvest's goal is to integrate in the community in a way that beautifies the surrounding area and fits in well with the neighboring businesses. This is a picture of a dispensary in Scottsdale, Arizona. The signage is modest, there is none of the cultural references you might otherwise expect from recreational use. Harvest isn't in that business and doesn't operate in that manner. Instead, they have discreet signage, safe and secure operations, and I can only stress once again, and I'll mention it when we talk about traffic as well, what Mr. McCash said. A permitted use within your code is a drugstore. A CVS, a Walgreens, which are selling Schedule I narcotics, more plentiful and more varied than are sold here, they are a much more intense use, generating much more traffic than this modest operation for one purpose only. And so, I would suggest to you that it could fit in well in the neighborhood and present a much less intense use than any of these permitted uses. So that takes me into traffic, and I'll tag-team this with Mr. McCash, because he began this subject well. Your code is very specific, that you have to take into account current vehicular traffic volumes, and traffic volumes as may be expected to increase with increasing development of the community. So you can't just look at this snapshot in time, you have to expect that growth will occur, traffic will increase. Are we, in fact, Harvest, so overwhelming as to be beyond what could be expected as part of that normal growth pattern in the traffic flow? I would suggest to you that that is certainly not the case. As I mentioned to you before, we know how many people run into a corner drugstore for any number of things throughout the day, generating a lot of trips, especially at that peak hour. But instead, here, Harvest would expect, based on its past operations, to serve a maximum of 175 patients per day. So based on traffic counts, an additional 175 patrons over, we've said an eight-hour business day, I want to discuss hours of operation, because the state actually allows a much longer business day, but we would suggest that it was going to have a negligible effect on vehicular traffic in the area versus some of your permitted uses. And so if you'd like to add anything about the surrounding area and the neighborhood for the conditional use, certainly.
Just to give you a little bit of where the existing traffic flow is here, this particular site is just north of the nursing home area there. It has a right turn in from westbound, right turn in, right turn out, has a left turn lane into Tonawana Trail from the main arterial access. People coming in would go strictly back to there and then come back out the same way. They're either going to take a right turn on the major road going out, or they can go through the, there's a curb cut, access to a gas station area there that gets them out to, I believe it's called Central Drive, so that they could take a left turn and go back towards east. So from a traffic flow standpoint, the roadway is sufficient to meet what would be here for the permitted uses and would be there for this particular use itself. Again, what happens as far as future development? In this area, we don't see that there's really any land left to develop, so from an increase in future development, unless the nursing home gets redeveloped as something different, or the property to our south gets sold and redeveloped as something of a major intensity land use, which from a size standpoint, that's not a very large parcel of land to redevelop into something with a high-intensity land use. We believe that the current ingress and egress out of the site itself and the area of the site is sufficient for our anticipated traffic flows.
And so, you've been very kind with your time tonight. I do, if you'll indulge me for just a few minutes more, wish to address some other considerations that I think are very germane to this body's deliberations on this application this evening. I know Ms. Blankenship hopefully will indulge me, because there's certain things I have to express to you on behalf of my client and make known, or I wouldn't be doing my job. I think you've heard tonight on the merits about this business and why I believe we're entitled to this conditional use permit. And I don't want to dwell on this, but I do feel the need to say that this planning commission obviously cannot act arbitrarily or unreasonably apply the conditional use factors. We would have legal remedies as a result. I know this city is considering, this body is considering whether dispensaries should be prohibited. I think with the city's administration, we can agree that Harvest is in a unique situation. Our rights have vested to when we applied for a dispensary license under your zoning code than existing. And so we need to be treated fairly and considered objectively with regard to these factors. The city cannot advance its moratorium or its potential prohibition through the guise of a conditional use permit application. And I know that this commission understands this, this application is no longer about whether or not someone wishes to have medical marijuana dispensaries in their community. We've moved past that for this particular application. And instead, if the planning commission were to unreasonably deny Harvest's application based upon the evidence before you, we would not have any choice but to challenge that decision, the city's ordinances, and the city's attempt at a medical marijuana regulatory framework. And to be a little more specific about that, we've talked about drugstores being a permitted use and some other uses being permitted, and that does present challenges for the city under the Equal Protection Clause of the Constitution. Relegating this to a conditional use and certain conditions that may be attempted to be placed upon us in any resolution are problematic for the city treating this dispensary differently than another drugstore. And so too, we've wanted to play ball with the city, that's why we're here, that's why we're acting on this application. But I would suggest to you that the city's power to adopt resolution and ordinances here is severely curtailed and preempted to the extent that it seeks to supplant the state's regulatory framework, which we've met, and we've satisfied and obtained our license. And so any conditions that the city would seek to impose that go beyond that framework can be overturned. It happened just that way in Michigan. And finally, the due process clause of the 14 Amendment means that you have to apply your zoning code in a way that there is adequate notice and warning to applicants to the standards to be applied. I think the evidence here tonight is overwhelming, we satisfy your standards. But certainly, if we were denied, I think that presents issues that the standards are so vague as to be unenforceable. And so, a successful legal challenge against the city would involve us operating as a permitted use, the city not being able to impose its regulations upon it, and damages and attorney's fees under federal civil rights statutes. I can't stress enough that that's not what I want to talk about, I want to just say it for the record, but instead, I would not want anybody to resort to needless litigation, because we believe this is a business that operates well, operates honorably, in a space that provides a valuable service to the city. We're proud of what Harvest does, and we believe that it's going to provide real medicinal and humanitarian, satisfy real medicinal and humanitarian needs of this community, and it can be approved on the evidence before you tonight. With that, I would say that our medical professional, Mr. White, the lawyers, we're all happy to answer any questions that any of you may have. And I would just say, and I'm happy to address this at any time that you see fit, Chairman, I know you have before you two draft resolutions, we are prepared to stand before you and accept the vast majority of the conditions set forth within the motion for approval. There's 18 of them, I believe 15 we have no problem with and would be glad to abide by. There are three related to hours of operation, a median island for parking, and related to lighting that we would need to discuss further with you because of regulations already passed by the state, and then just simply safe circulation of traffic. I'm happy to take those up at any point in time. If now's the time you'd like me to get specific, I'm happy to do that.
No, we'll do that when we start our discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff report.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As has been well stated to this point, we are here considering a conditional use approval to allow for a medical marijuana dispensary at the address of 4370 Tonawana Trail. I did want to mention, if you saw some of the documentation included in your packet, which is the letter of intent submitted by the applicant, has an address of 2370, but we are talking about 4370 Tonawana Trail. As we went through this application, we did highlight in the staff report the specific conditions of the conditional use and what needs to be considered when looking at this application. The conditional use process was required as part of the zoning code when this application came in. The conditional use, again, this is a somewhat unique, I know it's been compared to drugstores and pharmacies and other permitted uses in the city. The one thing we looked at when we were looking at conditional uses is the uniqueness of the provisional license granted by the state where they were only awarding one license within a three-county area. So it's very unusual, you'll find one drugstore, one pharmacy, within a three-county jurisdictional area. So conditional use, I thought, was established in order to make sure all the provisions and requirements were addressed, given the large nature of the constituents that it may be serving. Well, so we look at the conditional use process, and I think it was outlined in the applicant's application, that the applicant must prove to this board that they will not have a substantial material detrimental effect on surrounding properties, and will not have a substantially negative impact on or substantially conflict with surrounding properties. And furthermore, taking into account current vehicular traffic volumes, traffic volumes may be expected to increase with increasing development in the community, and taking into account vehicular turning movements in relation to routes and traffic flow, street intersections, site distances, and pedestrian traffic, the vehicular traffic to and from the conditional use can be accommodated by existing street network without significant adverse effect. So those are the real two main conditions when we're looking at it from a conditional use standpoint. As was stated earlier, this was adopted and approved in the B2 zoning district as a conditional use in 2017. This Harvest was awarded a provisional license in June of 2017. This, this Harvest was awarded a provisional license in June of 2018 by the State Pharmacy Board. Some of the existing conditions you can see on the site. The location here is Tonawanda Trail. There's a CPA facility here. This was a recently demolished and rebuilt Crestview facility, nursing home facility there at near 675 and Indian Ripple Road. Something exists, it's like Mr. Ruchas said, it's about a 3,000 square foot building. We had it about 2,834 square feet. This, again, was, I think, constructed in 1971, so any of the requirements in terms of landscaping and the like have been grandfathered as a result of this building being established so long ago, before we were even incorporated as a city. The existing conditions, again, you can see the access points on Indian Ripple. If you were traveling from the east part of Indian Ripple, you'd be able to enter to the site going right. If you were coming from the west, the west on Indian Ripple, there is a left-hand turn lane. Exiting the facility, the only, your only ability to come out is to the right with the I-675 interchange located right here, just to the east of the proposed intersection of Tonawanda and Indian Ripple Road. As you can see here, there's street traffic throughout the neighborhood. Tonawanda does exit onto Indian Ripple as a right only. It does exit out to County Line Road at a traffic signal where you can go left and, and right, but you traverse through a residential neighborhood. Looked at some of the requirements of the conditional use. Again, we're looking at parking based on a non-specified retail location since the medical marijuana facility is not specifically called out for in a, in the zoning code. We did look at the 2,834 square foot gross floor area and came up with the requirement that the site have 12 parking spots, which have been provided. I know in the presentation, again, without having a, with using just what the applicant has been testified to tonight, the 12 parking spots on the site would be to accommodate, what they've stated is that's 175 maximum patients per day. When we were looking at it originally, I think the letter of intent states that upon saturation point 2025, they stated that they would, they would have about 300 patients per day on average. So, I'm, I'm not sure if the 175 would be a more appropriate gauge on the parking or the, in terms of what to expect for the number of visits or the 300. But the applicant has provided, based on our code, for one spot for every 250 square feet of gross floor area, 12 parking spots that are required. The landscaping and buffering requirements, some of what we looked at were, again, this is completely paved area. There is a vegetation line on this property line that shares, that abuts the residential property just immediately to the north. We did have some requirements in the conditional use that require that stone wall to be removed and to put the vinyl fence up to the front of the building and going back. Some of the pictures you can see from the site clearly show the vegetation area along that northern property line. As you can see here, the stone wall is dilapidated. This will be the requirement for the fence to be located here. Also, there's a requirement on the, on the dumpster enclosure, as you can see, is falling apart, that that be reconstructed with masonry materials as is required in, in the zoning code. Also, for signage requirements, this isn't a B2 zoning district, so all B2 signage requirements will be adhered to when considering permits for this, for signage on this site. With that, since a lot of the information that was presented here tonight was not presented to us beforehand, our recommendation is that planning commission weigh all, weigh all the evidence, facts, and, and information presented by the applicant and by the public input processes as yet to come. But it's, again, taking into consideration the requirements of the conditional use, planning commission would consider all the testimony and decide whether the applicant has met that burden of proof that they have not, that they have satisfied the conditions of a conditional use for planning commission to make a decision. With that in mind, we have prepared two resolutions. One resolution is to approve, and with the approval, there are 18 conditions. I think there was an issue with three of the conditions. One was condition number seven about the turning off of the parking lot light, which should not be turned off by 10:00 p.m. We would be, we could work with the applicant on that and look at the reduction of the lighting levels as opposed to a complete turnoff if it is, does violate any state security requirements. The hours of operation, they're proposed to be from seven, they have, in the letter of intent, it's seven a.m. to eight p.m. Monday through Sunday. We have required the operations be limited Monday through Saturday, seven a.m. to seven p.m. And from what I understand, on the state statute, the only requirement on hours of operation is that they be open 35 hours a week. I didn't see anything that granted them a certain amount of hours, only that they had to be open a minimum amount of time per week. So, we, that was within our purview and our home rule to be able to establish the hours of operations Monday through Saturday, seven a.m. to seven p.m. And I believe, oh, the parking lot interior. If we look at the resubmitted site plan that we got today, based on some of the conditions that they reviewed, we didn't see an issue here with, we required eight feet based on the width of the parking lot. They're showing a six-foot island in here that maintains a 20-foot, 25-foot drive lane on either side, which I think we could work with. Eight foot was just based on square footage. You can see that requirement removed, the proposed parking blocks. It did add some landscaping onto the interior of the site, and it did expand the median here to protect the parking lot, the parking spots from ingress and egress into and out of the site. So, the eight foot wouldn't be, it wouldn't be inappropriate to reduce that to six foot. The other condition, reduce the lighting levels to 25%, but we still are recommending the condition number 13 on the hours of operation. As well as included in your packet is a resolution, well, along with the resolution to approve is the, is some language for a recommendation to deny if you decide to go that route. But we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our usual excellent report from our, from our staff, and also appreciative of the, of the applicant, too, that was very thorough. We'll be opening the public hearing. I would like to say something before we begin the public hearing, and that is simply to, to reiterate, what we're discussing tonight is the provision, the conditional use of this particular application. We're not discussing the, the rightness or wrongness of medical marijuana. So, if you, if y'all would be so good as when you, when you give your testimony to confine it to the zoning part, not the philosophy, it'll just make things go a lot faster. And also, to make things go a lot faster, rather than swearing in each individual person, since you are actually testifying, if you, if you feel that you are moved to, to come forward and, and give your, your testimony, I'm going to have to swear you in. So, why don't we do this as a mass group? So, if you think you're going to do that, if you'll please stand and raise your right hand, we're going to do this. Is everybody up? Thank you. I, and state your name, affirm that the testimony that I am about to give before the planning commission of the City of Beaver Creek is the whole truth, to the best of my knowledge. Thank you. Now you can sit down. And I will open the public hearing, reminding you again, three minutes. I got the timer, and if, if you think you're going to go over three minutes and someone wants to donate their three minutes to you, please let me know as you step up here so I can set this for six minutes. So, right, and as you come forward, if you would, give me your name and address for the record.
My name is Susan Rollins, and I live at 405 Tanglewood Drive, and I'm a 45-year resident of Beaver Creek.
Fire away.
Thank you, thank you. My attitude about cannabis is I feel that the people have the medical needs, they're fine. That's not my issue. My issue is location of this dispensary. It's, it just doesn't belong, it doesn't belong where you have it placed. And number one, they say it's a lot, there'd be improvement of property value. I don't believe that. There's not enough parking. I have pictures. I have them blown up for you, and this is, you can see, that parking area is very small. There was a plumber there before, and he had just probably a couple trucks and, you know, coming and going. That's not like customers coming and going. The overflow, people are going to be parking on the street. Well, the people from the nursing home park on the street, too. This picture was taken of the nursing home at 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon on Monday, and it's full. If you go there on the weekends, and, and my father-in-law, who is here, when we go visit him, you know, we have to deal with this parking on the street situation. And if we add these people going into the dispensary, the parking will continue on down to the street and to where the homes are. This is also a picture of how close, this is the first house, to the dispensary, and it's very, very close. This is really a small amount of traffic coming down from 675, you know, when the people are exiting, and when you're trying to turn left on Tonawanda, it is, it's a nightmare. And if you do this at 5:30, 6:00 o'clock at night, you can just forget it. And then when you pull out of Tonawanda, you can only go right, which means you have to go into, where Kmart was, or where Burger King is, Burger Chef, whatever it is, you have to go through there, do a turnaround, come out, or you go down Tonawanda until you hit County Line Road, which is what people do. So, there's really an increase of traffic in the neighborhood. And they said they had security cameras for the business, that's fine, but I'd like for them to put security cameras in the neighborhood, just a little added expense there. And I'm surprised you had a moratorium about having any dispensary in Beaver Creek. And I think the, the public was happy with that. And then the moratorium came down for a short period of time, and then all of a sudden, these people came in, and then the moratorium went up again. And I don't understand why you would vote it in and vote it out and vote it back. That's something I don't understand. I have someone who will be willing to give me their time.
Okay, would that person, Denise Sherf, identify yourself, please? Denise Sherf, 3020 Kings Lane.
And this is like an, just an open door into Beaver Creek. Word pictures are very, and word associations are very powerful. If I say ice cream, you say cold, yummy, refreshing. If I say humidity, you say uncomfortable, sweaty. If I say oak wood, you say good schools, low crime rate, clean, orderly, prosperous. If I say Beaver Creek, good schools, low crime rate, clean, orderly, prosperous, healthy population dynamics, good place to buy property. Five years, let's see what happens in five years. Oakwood, who has a moratorium, they're not having a dispensary, nor is Kettering, nor the other places around here. Oakwood, good schools, low crime, crime rate, clean, orderly, prosperous. Beaver Creek, oh, that's where I go get my drugs. Increased crime rate, this is a possibility because I think that's just an open door. Schools struggling because of people moving out or renting their property, loss of home value, loss of higher dollar tax base, negative change in population dynamics, which will be reflected in the classroom. I've seen this effect personally. I am a teacher, 41 years, plus seven years subbing. I know what I'm talking about. I've seen the population change where I teach, and I've seen the classroom change dramatically. I have also seen fetal effect from pregnancies. We have children, we have more children with problems in school, like you don't, you have, I mean, it's, it's just mind-boggling. I'm just asking you to make the right decision and preserve Beaver Creek's reputation, and this decision will influence, influence the voters in future elections, but I know this is a very difficult decision for you to make because of the threat of a lawsuit. And I'm sorry for you for having to have that situation presented to you, but I'm going to give you these pictures. I have many more pictures. I have a picture of my father-in-law's home. He's done upgrades, he's done all this wonderful stuff since he's been there. Love him. And, and this is sort of my minutes, and you may have this, you know, to look through yours. And I thank you for your time. And if I have any extra minutes, I give them whoever's coming up next. Thank you.
You can't do that. Nice try.
Mark Olson from 4039 Maridale Drive. She hit most of the points that I wanted to hit. I do have to say that I'm surprised that one of the solutions that Harvest offered for traffic was to cut through a gas station, which I don't think is legal, and I think BP would probably have a big issue with that. I do think that it'll include, increase traffic in Tonawanda. My wife and I walk through this neighborhood with cars parking on both sides. Sometimes it gets pretty, pretty narrow walking through there. So, and the other thing that, issue that I worry about is if you've been at that intersection, you know people make the illegal left turn on Tonawanda onto Indian Ripple. I can only assume that with 175, 300 more people going through that intersection, you're going to see more of that. And its location, you really can't put another light there because then you'd have three lights right in the way. So, again, my big issue is the traffic pattern, traffic flow, traffic pattern. You know, a little bit, just talking about the, the whole retail area that, that's, is Harvest building and the CPA, and then the BP on the corner. The rest is residential, and so you're going to get more traffic through residential areas on this, and probably more illegal turns. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg O'Connor with Macnamie &amp; Macnamie, 2625 Commons Boulevard here in Beaver Creek. I represent Burrus &amp; Company CPAs. They are the ones who own the property directly to the south of this location. It was mentioned a couple of times in the applicant's presentation. We're here in opposition to this application. Mr. Burrus has been there nearly 30 years. Obviously, I'd like to focus on the conditional use standards, of course, taking the traffic issue first. That seems to be a concern for the prior comments before me, and the effect that it's going to have. The number of 175 given here tonight, obviously, I think, it needs to be scrutinized a little bit, as the staff report suggested that that number was 300 in the letter of intent submitted by the applicant as the ultimate saturation point. But that number needs to be looked at a little harder, I think, because they reached that number by suggesting that it's 2% of the area population, and then they apply that 2% to the population of Beaver Creek. But as the staff report suggested, this location is going to serve a much greater area than Beaver Creek alone. So, that 300 is going to be much larger at the end of the day. And with no left turn onto Indian Ripple off of Tonawanda, that traffic's going to flow down to County Line Road, including the traffic that needs to get back on 675. That's going to be a lot of traffic through that residential area. Mr. Burrus has actually hired CISO, Robert Matco, to do a comprehensive traffic study of what this is going to do to this area. That report was not able to be completed in time for tonight's hearing, but Mr. Matco tells me that it will be done by August 18th. We'd be happy to provide it to the board if the board would like to table the motion for, to consider the traffic report that CISO is going to do. Finally, I'd just like to add that the other conditional use standard also includes that it not substantially conflict with surrounding properties. This is obviously directly next to a residential neighborhood. There's a reason that the city did not make this a conditional use in residential neighborhoods because it conflicts with that use, directly next to it. We're not here to argue about the benefits of medical marijuana or any of that. Like, I think, most of people in the audience, our issue is with the location. This is just not a good location for a medical marijuana dispensary. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Annette Poth, 2179 Wedgewood Drive. I have comments for myself, and I have a text message from someone who would like me to pass on. It's just very brief. She is currently in the emergency room and would like her opinion. Can I? Okay, all right. This- This is from Sidney Gerring on Adams Way in Beaver Creek. And she asks that, that she strongly recommends that the city's legal team benchmark Huber Heights and Kettering's stands, and step up to protect all of its citizens and their properties and businesses. So that's Sidney's comments. My comments, I want to cite a few points, and my references are, first, from the Montgomery County Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services. A woman there who did a comprehensive study off of other states who have legalized marijuana, that increased access equals increased use. And a decreased perception of risk in increased use. So increased use leads to increased abuse, and increased addiction, and increased consequences. One out of 11 users become addicted to marijuana, and when it starts in adolescence, the rate is one out of six, similar to cocaine. The second point that I want to share with you in supporting against medical marijuana dispensaries even growing and processing comes from the, it was a 175-page report called the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Commission, came out in October of 2017. And the report is "The Legalization of Marijuana in Colorado: The Impact Study", which resulted from after medical marijuana was legalized, there was increased impaired driving, increased driving fatalities, increased youth marijuana usage, increased adult marijuana usage, increased exposure to marijuana, the increased seizure of illegal, increased seizure of illegal selling. And marijuana continues to be a top, one of the top four reasons for drug and alcohol If you do allow Harvest to come into Beaver Creek, I ask that the legislation be written that should their business fail, that the license cannot be sold, and Beaver Creek therefore has no dispensaries. And in closing, I have a compilation of articles. They focus on six areas. Environmental impacts, economic impacts on property value and industry jobs, education and youth usage impacts, the comprehensive plans from the township and the city, legislation, risks, and zoning, and outcome data from states with legalized medical and recreational marijuana that I offer to any of you for future reading. Thank you.
You timed it perfectly.
How about that?
She must have practiced.
I'm George Rollins, and I live about three doors, at 4348 Tonawanda Trail, which is about three doors down from this building. I and my neighbors that I've talked to, all of us, have no problem with anything medical. What we have a problem with is the location. It will devalue our properties. There's no question about it. We know it will. And second, he's already touched on it, but the traffic flow coming off of, down onto our street there, you can only turn left off of Dorothy Lane. You can't get back out and turn to the left, and, and most of our traffic is going to be coming in off of 675 and 35. They can't get back on there. The only way they can get back on there is to come down Tonawanda Trail, and go all the way down, and turn, and go, and come back. So the traffic is bad. It, it's just, like I say, it's my opinion. I have no problem with these people having their marijuana. I may have to have it someday myself, who knows? And I'm, I'm not against that. What I am against is the location. This is a residential neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood, and there's no question about when that comes in, that it's going to create a problem for the, for the area. And I hope you think about it. And I thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Barbara Fierich Olson, and I'm at 4039 Maridale Drive. And I want to harp on the traffic. Once again, that's my concern with this. My husband spoke earlier. We live on the other side of 675 in the neighborhood there. We walk back through there, up to the old Kmart. When the green came in, and all the traffic started coming from 675, our whole life changed. I mean, it really affects how the traffic flows. There are times of day where you just don't even go in that direction because you can't get through. And now we are going to add, as someone else mentioned, we're going to add something that is serving three counties, and all of these people will be coming. We walk in that neighborhood, kids walk in the neighborhood, there are no sidewalks. The only place for pedestrians to be is on the road. Cars park on the road, so you have to do this while the cars are weaving through. It is not safe as it is. I strongly, strongly urge that this is not the location. How about North Fairfield, which is very much a commercial area, lots of businesses? Put it there, but not right there in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Robert Rodriguez, 973 North Fairfield Road. Thanks for the recommendation. I personally don't appreciate a company, a multi-million dollar company coming in here and threatening this community in the manner they did tonight. It got to my heart, my soul. I didn't appreciate it. These people are multi-million dollar operations, and don't kid yourself. And don't allow them to shove this down our throat. Thank you.
My name's Paul Sackhouse, and I live at 206 Bramble Bush Trail in Beaver Creek. Couple of weeks ago, I sent to each one of you a packet of material that I had to discuss my concerns about medical marijuana, legalized marijuana. I know we're not to talk about that tonight. At least, just be aware that I am strongly opposed to both the legalization of marijuana. As a retired pharmacist, the concern I have is, no one would walk into any pharmacy and take 400 chemicals off a shelf and take them. Yet that's what we're asking people to do, and I don't care whether it's candy, chocolate wafers, or whatever it is. It still has the same constituents in those derivatives. I'm not arguing against synthetic cannabidiol, or some of the other synthetic products that are actually on the market. THC, as you know, is on the market as Marinol. That's regulated by the FDA. It's got specific studies to show that it's effective. What we're setting up is a dispensary that's going to be dispensing cake, cookies, candies. And as a pharmacist, I'm just appalled at it. I don't like the location. I think it's too close to the greens. The other concern I have is the, the crime with it. I still understand it's a Class 1 drug in Ohio, and these dispensaries cannot use bank accounts to, to take care of the money that they collect. And that's the reason that a lot of states are having problems with crime with these dispensaries, because they accumulate this cash in the buildings. And with that, I, I don't envy your decision, but I hope you can think of another way to do it and postpone this.
Thank you, sir. Just so you'll know, I think you must have sent those packets to City Council, not to Planning Commissioners, because we didn't get them.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's all right. Next.
Hi, I'm Rita Ryer, 1372 Windsor Drive. And I'm a little confused on why we just have to talk about zoning when Harvest got over half an hour to talk about the benefits of marijuana. And I, I think it's an unfair playing field that us citizens have in suggesting why we don't want this. And I just, I have a couple of questions, and I, I have a couple of remarks. And I, I just started writing notes, and so they might not be organized. But I know, I think it's Steve White Harvest from Arizona. By the way, my dad has cancer. He doesn't, he's not on marijuana, and he's in Arizona, but his neighbor is growing pot plants. So I do have a concern about Harvest when they say they're a retail for-profit. And if we're really considered about, if we're considering patients who need this, why is this not a non-pot profit? So that was a consideration. This is all for profit. The control program, according to their fly, their, their slide, established was 2016, and I thought that wasn't long enough to establish any of the negative effects to really get the data. And if you look at some of the marijuana grow sites, they really encourage to try to push this across the nation as quickly as possible, before there is even that data as well. And according to Fox News, and on 629, like, 2018, and NPR, when they were talking about mapping out a marijuana, it was recreational marijuana, too, they were saying, I, I think Mr., I think it was Mr. Trout mentioned, the THC levels of past history, and talking about, you know, the good old days of the 60s. And the THC levels are far, far more potent now than they ever were. So they're not 1960s THC levels. So, some of my notes. Patients can access marijuana through Yellow Springs, and I, you know, I'm not near Talawanda Drive, but I think anywhere in this vicinity, marijuana having, everybody having access to marijuana, I totally disagree with. But I honestly think, I sat next to a lady on the plane coming out from my dad's, seeing him. And she was moving from California to here, and she was laughing, and she got a whole set of passengers all awry, because she was saying how easy it is to get medical marijuana, and how all her friends have prescriptions for medical marijuana. And if it is for pain medicine, how do we judge pain? It is subjective. Can I have three minutes, please? Somebody, anybody?
Susan Marsello.
Thank you.
278 Rebelport.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. I, I don't know if you guys realize the 500 feet, not to be near 500 feet of a school or residential or other things, that was based on alcohol sales many, many, many years ago. Have you guys gone out and mapped 500 feet?
Because it's not far.
Enforcement, I know he was talking about he'll have enforcement on his site, but enforcement around the area, that is a cost to taxpayers. Traffic growth is a cost to the taxpayers. So we're all, should be having this concern. And then, I think, I was looking up, just give me, just give me a sec. I know in Arizona, they pass medical marijuana, but also they have, I know he was talking about possession and cultivation of it, and they said, "If patient lives more than 25 miles from the nearest dispensary, a patient or caregiver may cultivate up to 12 marijuana plants in a closed lock facility." So is that the way we are going to go? Because I know my neighbor, or my dad's house, grows marijuana plants. So that's all I have to say. Please consider moving it to Dayton or someplace.
Good evening. My name is Marcy Snyder, and S-N-Y-D-E-R, and I live at 2742 Ty Heart Way, which intersects with Tonawanda Trail. I have known this neighborhood since 1976, when my parents moved to their house. Today, I live in the same house with my husband and two young boys. Over the last 40 years, I have seen the area move from a rural housing development to one of the most popular areas within the Dayton metro area. All of that progress has taken place on the outside perimeter of the neighborhood, and not so much on the inside. And don't mistake me, progress is good. While I did vote in favor of the legalization of medical marijuana in Ohio, voters did not have the opportunity to vote on the location of the dispensaries. I'm requesting the City Council vote no on the issue. I understand the state of Ohio has approved the license for the dispensary at this location. I would like the Planning Commission to consider the following, part of which came about, came about from a conversation from the City Commission Planning member, excuse me. Suggesting, I suggest a different site for the location of this business in Beaver Creek, one that is more appropriately zoned for more traffic, and is away from a residential neighborhood. There are many other existing and vacant buildings with the appropriate infrastructure that could be used for such a purpose. Should this measure not pass this evening, e, excuse me, pass this evening, I would suggest the Planning Commission modify the business zoning of this site to be a non-business zone property. My reason being, the property was owned prior to the mid-1970s, when it was Johnson's Donuts and a small beauty salon. This was in a time prior to I-675, and all of the surrounding development did not exist, and Indian Ripple was a two-lane country road. Then it moved to a plumbing business, which generated very minimal additional traffic. It's time to update the zoning with the time. We've talked a lot tonight about traffic flow, and I, I agree with a lot of the points on everything directed towards the Indian Ripple area. However, I live at the other end of Tonawanda Trail, or, excuse me, at the, near the other end, again, intersecting off of Tonawanda, one house in off of Tonawanda. With the upcoming expansion of the County Line Road, traffic at the Tonawanda intersection will already be challenging until the project is completed. Adding more traffic flow to that end of the street will only decrease the longevity of the pavement, which isn't designed for this amount of traffic, create more safety issues, including those of school bus stops, and cause traffic backups. In the end, I want to live in a residential neighborhood, not a business area, which is why my husband and I chose to live where we do. Our children and neighborhood children are often standing at their bus stop, along with other bus stops, along Tonawanda Trail. Living in a residential neighborhood, they do have a right to be safe and free from vehicle traffic. My heart goes out to those who are in need of medical marijuana, but that does not mean a, a business needs to sell any products in a residential neighborhood. Lastly, I would like to thank the members of the Planning Commission who have further explained this issue to me. I appreciate their input and willingness to hear me.
Thank you. Another person who practiced.
All right. So, anybody wants to give me three minutes if I run over on this one? I'm going to have to repeat a little bit from last week. Charles Miller, 4301 Tonawanda Trail. Currently, I live, I moved there about two years ago. I had to buy that house because y'all bought out the house I was going to get, right out from under me. Okay? But that's fine. No grudges. We're good. Okay? Now, I noticed these guys came here, and they're pretty well-prepared. I mean, doctors and attorneys, CEO of the company's coming here. They're talking about dropping a half million dollars on a property on Tonawanda Trail for 175 people. Hey, you do the math on any retail store, you're not going to make a half million dollars back on 175 people. That's not going to happen. Okay? Now, I live on this street. This is my street. This ain't their street. This ain't your street. This is my street. This is these people's street. I didn't want to make a huge deal out of it. I just, I, I'm no activist. I don't do that. I'm not a big fan of it. But I decided just to go down my street alone and do a test. How many people on my street want this business there? Now, 100% of the people that would actually answer the door for some crazy guy in the mid-afternoon, okay, trying to activate a petition on something, 100% of those people sighed, they're saying they don't want it there. I have friends that have admitted to me that they make, make a left right there, or a right, right there on Tonawanda, skip all the green traffic lights, get over to County Line Road. And they drive 40, 50 mile down, down through the, 40, 50 mile an hour down through there. Where's cops? They don't sit out there on our street, watching these people, stopping these people from doing anything. anything. So exactly, how are we supposed to feel safe on this statistic of 175 with saturation of 300 people going down our street? How, how are we supposed to feel safe that anything's going to happen regarding that? Now, there are solutions to this. We can, we can resolve this issue. But the fact of the matter is, it just does not need to be in our neighborhood. Okay? It just doesn't need to be there. There are plenty of places you could drop a half million dollars if you wanted to. But you bought a place at auction that was dilapidated, which means you're trying to drop every penny, reduce every penny you have to spend on this to make, maximize much profit. And I'm capitalist. I'm all about that, okay? I understand. But the logistics of this location is just not there. Okay? And as I'd said last week during the, during the meeting, hey, sell it at the green. I mean, it, that's a slogan that sells itself. Buy your green at the green. Okay? I mean, that works. Nah, it's all right. Y'all go ahead. I said my piece. You don't need it.
All right. Thank you. He has a future in marketing.
My name is Charles Stumpf. I live at 2849 Ellen Lane, which is the street directly, well, parallel to Tonawanda Trail. I was born and grew up on Tonawanda Trail and left, came back because of the neighborhood. So I literally, I live at the house directly behind where I grew up. I'm assuming all you guys live in Beaver Creek. I mean, if you want to find, to find $150,000 home in Beaver Creek, you're, you're scraping the bottom of the barrel. A few years back, I know we was voted one of the top 100 cities in the United States to live in. Putting this, from my back window, I can look out Caddy Corner and I can see the building. Okay? Putting this in my neighborhood is not going to help my property value. It's going to hurt it. And you guys know what it'd be like if it went in 100, 120 yards away from your house. Am I correct? A couple of the things, I made some notes and now I'm forgetting what to look at them. Supposedly in 2017, it was zoned to B2. Can you guys tell me what it was zoned prior to that? Or is this something I'm supposed to already know?
It's always been zoned B2.
Okay. There was a zoning modification in 2017. I think this gentleman said, was there?
We'll get into that when we discuss.
But anyways, you know, I mean, he's saying it's like a pharmacy. Yeah, it is a pharmacy. My father died of cancer. We got him Marinol. The Marinol gave him three extra months of life. It is completely legal THC at the time. So I'm not here fighting it from a moral or ethical standpoint. I'm worried about the traffic. There are 175 people a day. If each of them dumped 40 bucks, you're up, what is that, $700 a day? You're going to have to have security guards, somebody there to distribute. I'm sure they're not going to let one person be in the store. So you got three people. From a business point of view, at 175, you're not going to make a dime. But, let's see here. Yeah, and he's saying there'll be a visible guard. When I go to high crime areas in Dayton, east-west Dayton and that, you go to Walmart, there's a visible guard standing out there. Do I go there for comfort? No, that doesn't make me comfortable. It makes me think, hey, we got a problem. This is where my property value is going to be influenced. Somebody has to have security cameras everywhere. So, let's see here. I also was wondering, I've heard and I'm, but I'm not sure if this is also going to be a cultivation site. So I guess it's not. Visible guard, let me see, median island. And another thing that was said is, it was, you know, by the pharmacy, oh, I can't read my chicken scratch. Okay, it has to do with cultivation. I'll leave it at that. I just, I don't want it in my neighborhood. And I know you guys would not either. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joss Bellamy. I live at 1588 Kencler Drive. This is not in my neighborhood. But I came in late when I got to hear the man talking. One of the things he said was, it's going to increase property values because you're taking a vacant building and you're putting something there. I, I don't think that putting a dispensary in a vacant building is going to increase everybody's property values. They had talked about, basically, what I got from the man's conversation with you guys was that it's going to strong-arm you into doing something that the residents probably really don't want, with the threat of illegal thing. I don't really want to do that, but I want it on record. That right there should tell you everything that you need to know about the company coming in. I don't think there's any good place for a dispensary in the city of Beaver Creek. The residents don't want it. They had a, a, a meeting about it, I guess several meetings, the city council. Quoting the mayor said, nobody showed up. There was no opposition to it. A lot of people may not know, when you guys normally have these city council meetings and all that, so they couldn't come. But I want to make sure that people know that it's just not a good idea. You've got, they've talked about the traffic patterns there. They've talked about all the, the increase in that. I just don't see how, again, somebody else touched on it, having to have security, having to have security cameras, armed guards. And do they also likened it to, well, it's just like CVS, it's just like Walgreens. No. CVS and Walgreens are completely different. This is a cash-only business. The people that will frequent this establishment from the surrounding counties know it's a cash-only business. Those who have bad deeds in their minds are going to come knowing the people that are coming there to buy this stuff, they're going to be having cash on them. And how does that impact our police department? It doesn't matter where you put it in Beaver Creek. Has anybody thought about the increase that it's going to put on our police department? That you're going to have to patrol these areas more? So just because it's legal now, I guess, in the state of Ohio, doesn't mean that we need to have this dispensary here in Beaver Creek, anywhere in Beaver Creek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last chance. Don't be shy.
You know what? I might take a off on that other three. Oh, no, come on back up there and talk to you again. I like you guys and I think y'all like me and I think, I don't dislike these guys, okay?
Before you start up again.
4343 Tonawanda.
There we go. Okay. Got to keep it legal.
Apparently. That's all right. I just had a couple of questions for you guys that y'all can answer for me. Okay? Number one, which one of you have a dispensary next to your house, anywhere you live? Arizona, Columbus, anything like that? I'm pretty sure I know the answer to that one. Which one of you would allow a retail store next to your house? I'm pretty sure I know the answer to that one. You talk about giving back. If, I, I don't look so much at what people say, but why they're saying it. Okay? Why do they need to come in and talk about how they're going to improve our property values? Why do they feel the need to tell us these things? They just put up the traffic counter today. I live on Tonawanda. I know when it goes up, I know when it's going to come down. Okay? If, how are you going to get an accurate judgment? And you put it up one day before you guys are supposed to vote on this thing? How, where'd you get your statistics from? I got a statistic for you that I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that is self-explanatory. There is a commonality between cigarettes and squirrels. People don't know that. They're both pretty much harmless unless you stick them in your mouth and light them on fire. Okay? That's a statistic I can throw off the top of my head without any research whatsoever. Okay? You're going to need a little bit more research than one day. Tell me what the traffic is going down Tonawanda and what you expect it to be. So Mr. Burris can expect my support on financial regarding paying for this traffic study. But I think we ought to at least know what we're dealing with. I think it's too new. It's too new of a thing before we just start arbitrarily deciding where we're going to start placing stuff. Laws haven't been put in place yet for certain things. Like, I wouldn't want a liquor store there. I'd be here if y'all were putting a Bible store in. It's retail. It doesn't belong in a neighborhood. Okay? CPA, a service. They're not creating a lot of traffic. Now, if, if you are absolutely dead set on having this thing here, block off Tonawanda. Put in a blockade. You can't drive through the neighborhood going to that gas station. And that creates a hassle for me, but fine. I would rather create the hassle for me than have the traffic go driving through my town. I'm here for solutions, guys. Okay? We don't, we don't want to cut off that access. I kind of like being able to drive my daughter around there to the movies, going that way. Because I make a right, right into the green, you know? But if I had to deal with that by blocking it off, that's fine. Do something. Okay?
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
You know, I've been doing this, I've been doing this since 1986 and that's the most entertaining testimony I've heard. I promise I'll never smoke a squirrel again.
I know. I learned something.
Okay, folks. Anyone? Uh...
Okay, I've got a minute?
Okay, this is the last second helping, folks. We got to move along.
I just wanted to stress a couple of things that I've heard tonight. One, you cannot refer to THC or cannabidiol or any one of the synthetic chemicals in marijuana as marijuana. Marijuana, the plant, is composed of up to 400 different chemicals. There's 60 to 90 different cannabinoids in there. It's true that the purified things that are regulated by the FDA are a lot safer than taking 400 different chemicals. THC is regulated by the FDA and has been on the market for years, as was pointed out. The other thing I wanted to mention, there was just an article recently in The Guardian about the situation in Oregon. They had 400s of dispensaries. Once they legalized marijuana, they didn't seem to need the medical marijuana dispensaries anymore. And now they've got a major problem of distribution. And in Ohio, it appears that we're going to have the opportunity or the necessity to vote down legalization of marijuana again. And that's, that's going to be a terrific problem because all we're doing is, is creating a market for the use of all kinds of hardcore drugs in our area. I'm totally opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input.
We did receive one letter that came in. It was from James Johnson from 4115 Rushmore Place, stated that he was opposed to the request. Mr. Johnson did list several proposed requirements if the planning commission did decide to approve the case.
Thank you very much. Okay, with the public hearing closed, we will now turn to planning commissioners and...
Mr. Chair, may I respond briefly just as to traffic?
No, it's, if we have questions for you, we will ask them. But this is, this is planning commission's turn now.
Mr. Chair, actually, I think, I believe at this time, due to the fact that there's being a private traffic study being performed, I would like to better understand the traffic flow within those neighborhoods before we allow, there is a 58% delta between the 175 that was proposed and the letter in 10 at 300. So I'd like to better understand how that's going to affect the neighborhood in general because it is cut through. So I would move to table this at this point until we receive the results of the traffic study. But we would need them by next month meeting in, in advance.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion on the floor.
Do we, I guess, I guess to kind of discuss that, is there, are there any other further issues that we would like addressed prior, if in fact we table this discussion? Are there any other issues or things that we would like to hear from either the applicant or the city prior to tabling so that we have those on the table so that in the event that we do table this discussion, we don't have to table again next time?
Well, if we, if we do table this, then the applicant will be back and we can reopen the public hearing because there will be new information at that time.
Understood. But do we have any additional information that we would want to request? So for example, I am very curious as to the discrepancy between the 175 and the 300 and what encompasses that. And if we don't have those numbers right now, I would ask that that also be addressed at the next hearing?
We have, we have a, we have a motion right now, so we'll let the motion die for a lack of second and ask your question.
Okay, I guess I do have a question for the applicant. There's this great discrepancy between the 175 and the 300, which I do think is an issue. I think that it's an issue, as mentioned, in regards to traffic. But additionally, I'm concerned at where those numbers were derived from. I know that in your presentation, you said that they were derived from your other locations. But what is the population of those other locations? What type of area are they servicing? And how does that correlate to what we are seeing here in Beaver Creek?
Sure. And so we did hear a lot about that. So let me, let me try to address it. As I understand the staff's calculation that came to 300, that was based on a saturation point of an entire market using the entire population of Beaver Creek.
In 2025.
And, and...
Not present today.
So, but, but what, what that does is that, so we've never seen an actual store, and we've operated a number of them, get to that level. Okay? And so what you also have, where you got the 175, the 175 was an estimation of the absolute saturation point if no dispensaries are added for this particular store. Okay? But it's wrong, actually. And the person who did the calculation, did the calculation based on what we typically see in a store at saturation, which is four to five years from now. Let me tell you why Ohio's different. So let's presume that Ohio doesn't add additional dispensaries, which is a bad presumption because they will. But let's presume that they don't. Okay? In Ohio, in every other state that we operate in, you are able to, to get your 14-day supply with every visit. Ohio, because it's run by the Board of Pharmacy, says that's silly. We don't do that with any other drugs. You can pick up your 90-day supply in one visit. So what nobody did in these calculations was cut the number of times they would actually visit the store based on the amount that they're able to get with each visit. The other thing that the state of Ohio says, and the reason sometimes you see those numbers up, is you have, in people who are poor, who actually bump those numbers up because sometimes they'll visit a store twice in a day. They, you can't do that in Ohio. Again, a rule from the Board of Pharmacy that says you have to at least get a day's allocation, but you can get up to 90 days. So the traffic counts, when you do the math in Ohio, will actually be lower than they will in other places. I can tell you when we've opened stores, we've never approached 175 people a day.
Are you servicing three counties?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I can understand why that intuitively has some appeal in terms of concerns in this room. But that's exactly why this, very unique to Ohio, 90-day rule really ameliorates that concern.
But, but does it ameliorate the concern? Because you just told me that we could get up to a one-day, a one-day supply up to a 90-day supply.
Correct. And so what, what we see with, with patient patterns is, people don't want to go, they don't want to go and pick up the smaller supply if they don't have to. I mean, the, the difference is with the poor people. We have a store in, in the DC suburb. The highest traffic count, any target in the nation, it's got the highest traffic count. There are four big chains across the street is their highest count there is. We have not come close to 175 people on a single day and we've been open almost a year. That is, it's just, it takes a very long, you know how many people are eligible to walk in the store today? Zero. This is the problem. Right? So the state of Ohio has not certified a single patient yet. So once they start the... So once they start the process, then first of all, what every state does is they, they don't get that process right. So they get, they're really slow in the, in the delivery of the process. It takes weeks, there's delays, there's all these sorts of things. So it takes forever for this patient population to ramp up.
Completely, completely understand that, but we also have to plan for the future just because it's taking that slow process.
Understood. So if, if it is true that people purchase, don't take advantage of the 90-day supply. And if it's true that in 2024, 2025, there aren't additional dispensaries, which the program does allow for more already, then you might get up to 175 people a day. If those two things were true, but my suggestion to you is based on all of the experience that we've had over the course of now seven years, that's not going to happen.
And with that 175, with apologies to Mr. Miller, as you recognize, Mr. Chair, the property is already zoned for retail. What you have to look at is at its current use, does it create significant adverse impact versus other retail uses already allowed in the area? We would suggest that it's, it's not. Quite simply, and Ohio's 90-day rule only makes that more clear.
Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen? Further questions on this?
Mr. Chair, I would move, again, that we table this issue until a traffic study is conducted. I have not heard enough compelling evidence on either side to make a, an actual decision. We're now hearing a third set of numbers, which you're unsure of. So I would like to re, again, like to table this matter until we can get the private study, and I, I think it would be compelling for the applicant to do some more homework as well.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Gentlemen, Ms. Anker?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll call roll then, please.
Mr. Height?
Hi.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Ankers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. And we are going to take a couple of minutes break before we launch into the next public hearing. Believe it or not, we actually have more planning commission business tonight. This one should be slightly less controversial. It's a, it's a public hearing on the Flying Ace Car Wash.
This is case number PUD 6-80, mod 7 of 18, on an application filed by Flying Ace Car Wash, 13375 National Road, Southwest Suite D, Reynoldsburg, Ohio, 43068. The application requests a major modification for 0.8470 acres of land to allow for the construction of a car wash located at 3200 CJ Drive, further described as Book 5, Page 7, Parcel 52, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Once again, this is a public hearing, so y'all know the drill. It has not changed since the last public hearing. So we will, we'll hear from the applicant first, and then from staff, we'll open it for public comment, and then we'll do some, we'll do some discussing here.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Gilger. I am the Vice President of Development for Express Wash Concepts. Last we appeared here, we were just Flying Ace Car Wash. In the last six months, we've merged with our Columbus partner, Mumu Car Wash, and created Express Wash Concepts, and we have attracted some, I guess, PE financing that's invested in our group and is excited to see us and help us expand. And we hope to add multiple units in the Dayton market. And we have been very, very satisfied with the performance of our existing Beaver Creek location, and we're hoping we're not too detrimentally impacted by the county line road improvement. But nonetheless, we have been looking at Beaver Creek for a second location for approximately six months and have been targeting, I think we started talking about the Friendly's location, and ultimately, after some different negotiations, we settled on the Burger King location on CJ Drive, which our, our, our hope is that we're kind of skating to where the puck's going. We hope to see that whole area kind of come back and improve, and maybe we can be a catalyst in that. So I assume everybody here is familiar with what we do and how we do it and how we maintain our facilities and hopefully treat our customers. And I'll be happy to address or answer any questions during that portion of the hearing. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Burkett?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission. The case you have before you is PUD 6-80, one of the earliest PUDs in the city. It's mod 7-18. It's the Flying Ace Car Wash. They're looking to get approval of a major modification for the construction of a car wash on a little less than an acre. Project's located in central Beaver Creek. This is an aerial photo of the area. It's just to the east of the Beaver Valley Shopping Center and just southwest of the intersection of US 35 and North Fairfield Road. This is a closer, closer view aerial of the site as it is now. As the applicant stated, this is the site of a former Burger King. It's, it's fairly highly developed. I believe it's about 85% developed right now in terms of impervious surface. And this application, what they're requesting this evening actually represents a reduction of that impervious area, so there's gonna be more open space or green space should this project go forward. As you can see, there is currently two access points, one on the extreme north end of the site and one towards the south center portion of the site. In this application, they're looking to reduce that down to one access point and have it generally in this location. I'll show you that in a second. The property, again, is on PUD 6-80 with a B3 underlying district. What that means is it, in the old PUDs, they would create a PUD overlay so you could look at a site plan, but they would go, they would fall back on the B3 uses instead of tailoring the uses as we do now. They just say all uses allowed in a B3. Car washes are allowed in a B3 and allowed in this PUD, so their application does meet the requirements for uses. To the south is a B2, but it's a non-conforming house. It's actually got access on all four, it's got roads on all four sides of the house. It's a quadruple frontage lot. It's a private access, or private residence as a holdover from when they built the overpass in 2002. To the west, oh, yeah, to the west is a financial institution, and to the southeast, I'm sorry, southwest is a church. And ultimately, North Fairfield Road, which is a several-lane road, is to the east. Seen here is the proposed site plan. The proposed building will be in about the same location as where the Burger King is now. Again, they are limiting the existing access and having a centralized access. When you come into the site, you can either go straight and use the, one of the 16...
Free vacu...
Free vacuums. Or you can go to the right, and there's a double, double-lane stacking area ultimately to get to the pay window and go through the, the car wash at this location. Based on the numbers, just based on the average car length, we calculated that there's enough stacking for at least 24, 25 cars in this extra-long stacking area. So we're not, there's, we're not, we don't have the concerns of cars stacking out onto CJ Drive and ultimately out onto North Fairfield Road. Based on the zoning code, they're only required, I believe, to have 16 stacking, enough for 16 cars to be stacked. And again, they, they propose to have several more than that. This, as the existing site, that is a automatic system, so you're coming through, and there wouldn't be a problem with cars getting piled up. I mean, I know when we did the first Flying Ace, there was concerns that cars would come through, or there would be a jam inside the building, but this is an automated system. So again, we're not concerned with cars and traffic flow through the site. Seen here is the proposed architectural elevations. It's the same building that, that's down on the corner of Indian Ripple, I'm sorry, yeah, Indian Ripple and County Line. It's approximately 35 feet wide, about 125 feet long, and about 25 feet, or 21 feet to the top of the arch roof. They're proposing a tan brick with a red brick base, gray metal roof, and have columns, brick columns on all four corners of the building. The intent here is obviously to simulate a airplane hangar, hence the Flying Express, or Flying Ace Express. In terms of signage, they're proposing wall signs on all four sides with 36-square-foot logo sign on both the front and the back of the building, and then some, I believe it's wash-related signs, it's advertisement signs there on the side elevation. And then the, on the side of the building, they're also showing 270 square foot. It's a mural intended to look like these are open bay doors and you're looking inside a airplane hangar. In terms of the ground signage, they're proposing to have one out in this location, but they're proposing one that's five feet tall, 32 square feet per sign face, and we added a condition that they take this brick and wrap it up the side. So I add, I kind of photoshopped what the intent there is to make it look more congruent with the other signs that we have throughout the area. There are 14 conditions in your approval for your consideration. One thing I did want to point out is there's a sidewalk that stops right here, existing, and they're proposing to extend that sidewalk all the way through the frontage of the property. So I just wanted to point out, point that out as well. I forgot to mention that. But again, there's 14 conditions for your consideration this evening. Planning commission, or planning staff does recommend approval, and we have to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Another nice, comprehensive report for which we are most grateful. It is a public hearing, so if there is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of, against, ask questions, step right on up, and I'll start the timer.
Hi, my name is Janice Kepler. I live at 990 North Fairfield Road, and I'm right catty-corner across from that location. Some of the items, I'm gonna read what I've caught concerns about. We're concerned about the congestion there at the intersection of North Fairfield Road. Now, CJ and also the entrance and access to 35, which is right across the street from that, you know, which is about to our house. What happens with the overflow traffic? Now, you indicate you might have 16 to 20-some cars, but if you go Mike's Car Wash, they got three lanes and they back all the way out to that road sometimes. I mean, I can foresee this becoming a problem, too, because a lot of that traffic that's down there, where I go use that now, I'm gonna be utilizing this one probably. They, like I said, they have three lanes. What do we do? Do we... So, so I saw, I was gonna ask about the availability. I see there's a wraparound. If the traffic backs up on the street, this could cause additional accidents. That's already a problematic area where people are taking turns to get on the ramp. You've got two lanes coming down North Fairfield Road, heading south, and they go down into one lane, and those people in the right lane, I mean, I don't need kill care. I can sit on my patio and I can watch them race down there. You start backing that traffic up from this place right here, and I can foresee there being difficulties in the people coming over that, over that bridge that goes over north, over 635, I mean. Also, CJ only has one lane going west. So when they come down, they're gonna take a right, and they're gonna go in, and take a right into one lane, which is gonna filter into this. If this backs up, anybody else that want to go down to Bob Evans or SVG when they come in, or Beaver Mallies or anything, are gonna be backed up with that traffic and are not gonna cause a problem, they're not gonna be able to get in there. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna go down and they're gonna go through that housing area, that one house, that they're gonna wrap around and come up on the other side. So I can foresee there being problems, which is only a right turn only, but people make left turns into that all the time. What about the water and chemical discharge from the facility? Now, I've read where they recycled their discharge, but when Burger King was over there, they cite, they had a sewer back up twice. And our basement just happens to be the lowest part on that corner, and that backed up into our basement. Now, we just renovated that last year and spent quite a bit of money. Don't wanna deal with that again, I can tell you, because it took us a long time to get to the point of where we felt confident to be able to put something down in that basement. And what about the contingency of the overflow and the water chemicals? Now, again, they're gonna recycle them, but there's always incidents, or there could be an incident where these chemicals that they're utilizing to clean these cars could get down into the well water. We're on a well. BP used to be sitting on the corner right adjacent to that one time, and many years ago, they had gas leak down into the well water, and somebody had to come over and test our water to make sure that that was not in, those chemicals were not in our water. How, where are they getting their water from? Are they getting their water from the aquifer that I'm getting my water from? Or are they getting it from city water? And where does the city get their water from? I have lived there since 1985, and I've never had a problem with water. What kind of a problem is this gonna cause for me, depending on where they're taking that water from? Not only me, but the other people that are in that area that are also on wells, too. Now, it costs a tremendous amount of money for me to have to connect to the city water. We had checked that one time before. I'm not going to pay that, not if I have a good well and I'd like to keep my well good. I question about this particular property. I see they got, it's a nice facility. I don't have any problem with businesses coming into Beaver Creek. I have no problem with that whatsoever. I just wonder if it wouldn't be better to move this on down, maybe across where the bank is, it be, where at Bob Evans or by SVG. I mean, they're building a new used car lot there. I mean, that, to me, would be a nice place so that those people could go over where that bank is on that one corner down there in those area, which give a bigger footprint from them to be able to move in there. And I respectfully ask that you take our questions into consideration when you're making a decision on to approve this application, and keep in mind that there, with the inclusion of this at that location, there will be three car washes on North Fairfield Road and less than three and a half miles. And you have to wonder about monetary-wise, as far as spreading that money out, and what kind of damage is that gonna do to the other two facilities as far as economic purposes? Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
I'll add my two cents, and again, Joseph Bell, McKenna Drive. I, I understand her concerns, and they're absolutely validated, but I also like the fact that this is a reuse of an existing area versus going out into our open areas that we still have a little bit of here in Beaver Creek and putting something else there. But I do think that some of her suggestions about possibly moving it, if there's even an ability to do that, to move it further down CJ, closure to where SVG will be, you've got the movie theater back there that's, that's defunct now, I don't know what's going on with that. But I do share her concerns with the traffic backing up, because if you do visit the location on Indian Ripple Road, there are occasions where you hit a high-volume time where you can fit 20-some cars in there, but you're still backed up into the entrance coming into where Kmart used to be. And it causes a lot of problems with trying to turn left into that, that area. So I can see that happening here, not necessarily the whole time the business is open, but there will be high-volume times where that would happen. And being that close to such a major intersection could be a potential issue. So I'm in favor for it. I think it would be great to have that, you know, again, competition. But I don't know if there's any possibility or any availability a little further down CJ that would help alleviate some of those problems for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Don't be shy. Okay? I'll close the public hearing and ask Ms. Melissa if we had any written input.
No.
Okay? I'll shake things up. I'm gonna start to my left.
Just one question for the, Ms. Geiler, is that correct? If you don't mind coming, yes, if you don't mind coming up.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Could you just address Ms. Kepler's concerns with, you know, the water, you know, your system that, that recycles the water?
Sure.
Protections against any leak?
So, all of the water that's applied to the car is captured in the, in the tunnel itself into a central drainage trench, and it is, there's a dam between where the soap and rinse water are captured and where the tire shine is captured. The tire shine is an oil base that goes out to an oil interceptor, and the other soap and water... and water is captured and goes out through three separate filtration, basically concrete culverts where it goes through sand filtration, goes back into the building, gets, you know, separated based on ozone and hard and soft water to help spot free, and then we use the reject water to recombine with the concentrated soaps to wash the car. So, we are proud to say that on an average day of washing across our sixteen units, we save over a million gallons of water a day. Last year, we washed two million cars through both brands. The minimal water that come, and then we dry the car in the tunnel with forced air, the minimal water that is on the car when it comes out of the tunnel is primarily rinse water, and there is some, you know, discharge of that rinse water on the pavement. The pavement water is all, you know, obviously captured through any storm sewer, but usually it's almost evaporated before it really runs or travels anywhere, it's quite minimal. We'll be on city water, we shouldn't affect well in any way, shape, or form. I can't speak to Burger King or their maintenance of how they've handled their drainage or sewer discharge, but we're a fairly small company with a full-time maintenance guy, and we pay attention to our properties, and the last thing we want to do is have a doubt, any mechanical failure that takes a wash down and/or, you know, creates any subsequent problems, so.
Thank you.
Okay?
Could you, do you have any statistics, I'm sorry, could you please come back up? I didn't mean to. Do you have any statistics on the average number of cars that you're seeing on the Indian, at the Indian Ripple location?
Yeah, I'm going to say probably on an average day, we're washing five hundred cars a day. And the thing that's kind of interesting about the business model is we are very, we can only release so many cars, you know, out of the wash into a traffic pattern, right? It's like one and a half cars a minute. And so, while the traffic impact is usually pretty minimal, because the people that are coming in are coming through and going out, there's not really any increased impact, except for those days when everybody in the community wants to wash their car, when it's sunny and their car's covered in salt and everybody, you know. Now, we man our, we add manpower on those days, and we do our best to control traffic. We've had municipalities giving tickets out to people, you know, we don't want cars to stack on CJ, we dedicated a lot of our site to the purpose of stacking cars. We surely do our best to prevent any kind of backup. We can't promise that would never happen, but we do our best to mitigate that, and hopefully those times will be few and far between.
Okay, no questions. Randy, I have a question for you, though. In regards to the stacking of the cars, how many cars, you probably don't know the answer to this question, maybe you do, how many cars could be stacked on CJ until it reaches North Fairfield?
Every level. About three.
Approximately.
Let's see here, I calculated the distance from this intersect, or this, to the intersection at two hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
So, I mean, if they're close together, I mean, I think, I believe the average cars, they're seventeen foot long, I think I looked that up.
Not anymore.
This is what I looked up on the internet, just to calculate stacking, and even if it's twenty, I mean, you're talking ten cars.
Ten cars?
Well, if they're close together, I mean, two hundred and twenty feet from the intersection to the entrance here.
Okay. Mind you, they're relocating.
Ten, sorry, maybe my math.
Yeah, okay. And the sewage problem, has the engineer, has Mr. Mormon looked into that?
He's, take a look at, he took a look at the site and didn't have any concerns, you know, I mean, we're increasing the amount of, I'm sorry, pervious surface, so that's why there's no need for additional stormwater detention or anything like that. I mean, he'll obviously, should this get approved by planning commission and city council, they'll have to come with the final plan, you know, that's a hundred percent engineer to show that, you know, that they aren't causing any additional runoff or any, or exacerbating any existing issues or anything like that.
And then my last question is that regards to the signage, how far from North Fairfield is that?
Again, this is about two hundred, two hundred and twenty feet to the intersection, I mean, you'd be talking two hundred plus.
No, this, the monument sign out front, that's not going to cause any line of sight issues.
No, you know, we, they have to be at least fifteen feet back from the pavement, and, you know, we'd make sure the final, this is the, where they want to go, we would make sure the final location, whether it be another foot or so back or something like that, we wouldn't let them have a line of sight problem, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just had a couple of quick questions for the applicant, Mr. Geiler.
Gilger.
Gilr, sorry.
Gil-Gil-Ger.
I gotcha. All right, so we talked about the Indian Ripple, I had concerns with stacking at that location, and we were assured at the time that there would be no issues with traffic backing up past your property line. We're in a little bit different space here, where if we back up past the property line, we're on public through fares. What are we going to do to make sure this is not an issue? I mean, this, this does very, very much so concern me with, with A, how shallow it is there at the very beginning of CJ, and then it backs up into one of our main arteries in the, in the entire city.
One of the differences is there's not a complimentary retail use here, being Starbucks, which is over at the other location. I think in hindsight, maybe the, some of the cross-traffic concerns with access to the vac spaces kind of create some of that. We've increased and added double stacking vacuums to help accommodate some of the, you know, when, when people get a wash and want to vacuum their car, and they have a tendency to want to wait, it just kind of creates more issues, so we think by adding additional vac spaces and increasing the stacking area, and the other, a little bit of a situation at Indian Ripple is the sharp hairpin turn kind of entrance into the wash that sometimes, you know, affects throughput, if you will, which we don't have that situation here, so. You know, I, as a business owner, we want to build a place people want to come to, you know, I can't, we can't really control.
That's actually, that's actually the problem I'm proposing, too, too many people want to come to the car wash, we will have a public issue.
Yeah, I, I can't really give you, I mean, we can double our prices and create more wait time, and I, you know, I don't know really how to, how to combat that, other than.
We're actually very happy to see that area get redeveloped, it'd be nice to see that area redeveloped. What about ice controls?
We.
This is one thing it does concern me, that thing sits like thirty feet from the main road.
Right, right.
During the very cold months, it will.
So we, we install in slab heating with a boiler system at the exit of the wash, so ninety-five percent of the residual water comes off the car coming out of the wash, and it, that concrete extends to that second arrow, basically where the curb outlet is, yeah, right there.
Okay.
And so all that slab is heated, we don't wash below zero, it's got to be zero and rising for us to be open.
Sure.
But we can wash to zero degrees and we can control ice mitigation. We salt, we, we are, we're very strict with our maintenance people, that our lots are plowed before we open, we salt, you know, we do everything we can to mitigate that.
Okay, that's fantastic. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You all left me with one, so, staff?
Yes, sir.
With one entry and one exit point, and you have basically three different traffic patterns coming in and out of that one spot, was there any discussion about utilizing that secondary exit for when cars do come out? Obviously Burger King had it there for a reason, as their people went through the drive-through, they could easily exit and traffic wouldn't get backed up, this is going to be even more traffic? Could you tell me any discussion or anything that you guys have had to?
Their original plan did show that exit, there being an exit straight out, but our engineer wanted to give a more definitive movement, being that there's a public street right across the, I mean, there's, there's a public entry point, this is another street, so in order to give a more definitive traffic movement in and out of the site rather than having the two, you know, he asked them and they complied with our engineer to condense this down into one access point rather than keeping the two open. They originally had this a little bit closer to the intersection, which we wanted to get as far away from the intersection as we could, as well as try to line it up with, I think it's Wolfher Drive or, I can't remember the name of that street right there, but, but again, I know that they had an access point here, but like I said, that we wanted to get it closer to line up with the existing street and as far away from the intersection as possible.
Okay. All right, I'll take the engineer's word for it. That's all I have.
You know I'm going to have questions, but they're for the applicant, you're off the hook, Randy.
I just wanted to point out, I know that the stacking at Indian Ripple is challenging, but they, their site is set up for sixteen cars stacking. And again, when I said sixteen before, I was thinking of the number sixteen, because that's how many cars the Indian Ripple store has for stacking capacity, whereas a drive-through, you know, we calculated, they're required to have ten, they provide, just based on the numbers, twenty-four, and, and so they're over two times what the minimum requirements in our zoning code is for stacking. I mean, twenty-four cars was a lot of cars, but, you know, we want to make sure that we push that number as high as we can, just because, you know, the Indian Ripple was a concern. But, you know, there is room for cars, two rows of cars to go all the way through and ultimately to the pay window, and then, I mean, at this point is where you get down to the one car, but, you know, we figured that twenty-four was ample number of parking, but just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And I want to say I was pleased to see that you're using piped water and not drilling your own well, because I live about two blocks from you all, and we're on a well, and we really like our water, and we want to keep it that way, so. And just so you'll know, within our zoning code, any, any business that uses water, whether they recycle it or not, there are requirements for oil separators in the, in the floor drains and all that stuff, that's in the zoning code, so they don't even start without it when they do their plans. Now, I had two questions, and they both, they both deal with, with the traffic flow. Normally, when, when someone comes in with their car, do they vacuum first and then wash, or wash first and then vacuum?
It really depends on the customer.
Okay.
You know, I'm a wash first and vacuum second, because I like to hand-dry my car. We, we provide a free towel service to kind of take off the residual water and so forth and so on. Some people just come in and vacuum and leave.
So someone who wants to vacuum first would go into one of the vacuum bays and then queue up?
Right.
Correct, okay. There's a, an arrow, and I don't have my pointer, but there's an arrow that looks like a diversion from the entry, that one. It's somebody who changes their mind and decides they want to vacuum first?
Not necessarily, no, it's, it's twofold. The main reason it's there is if a vehicle gets stuck in that traffic lane, and it's a vehicle we can't wash, like a truck that has duallys on the back end, or a van that's got extensive, you know, ladder racks or something like that, and we can't run them through the wash because they're too tall or they don't go on the conveyor, we have to have an ability to get them, you know, redirected from using the wash. So, that's called a bailout.
Okay.
Now, because this site had some parking up there existing in that little kind of unusable swath, we're dedicating or delegating that as our employee parking, so we'll actually hold up the queue post-pay stations, allow the employee to go over there and park, and then back out and then cut, cut back through, so they're not taking up back spots and so forth. So it's twofold for that reason. So technically, it's two-way traffic, but only for employees going the other way.
Now, this is, I'm not sure if this question would, would be best answered by you or by staff, so I'll let you fight it out. And that is, the exit, when you're coming out of the, of the car wash, you make a sharp left, and then you make a sharp either right or left out of there. From experience with a relatively small four-wheel-drive truck that has the turning radius of the Queen Mary, is that entry-exit wide enough for cars coming out to make a sharp turn in the face of traffic coming in at the same time? Because people tend to swing wide, they think they're driving a boat, and they swing wide and will go through the middle of that, and I'm just, I'm, I don't know if this is for you or for staff, but is that opening wide enough to accommodate Bubba and his, and his big four-wheel drive at the same time someone in his Cadillac Escalade is pulling in?
Well, I will say if Bubba and his four-wheel drive has a vehicle that we can wash.
Right.
It's low enough, its tires are narrow enough to fit on the conveyor, then the turn, the, you know, the exit of the tunnel is on the far side of the building.
Sure.
And they have, I think we gave a twenty-five or twenty-seven foot radius to, to make that turn. We'd like to see twenty-five, we, we got twenty-seven. The original plan to have that as an egress, which we would prefer, however, if the rest of CJ matures and develops and there's, there's more activity down there, if that car wants to turn left and it can't, then, you know, the tunnel shuts down.
Right.
Because he can't move out of the way. So, the, the intent is to get people to circle around, to peel off in the vac spot or to get back out on CJ drive.
Well, that's why I was asking about vacuum first or, or wash first.
Right, right.
Because someone who vacuumed second is going to come out and then go into the vacuum area rather than actually leaving.
Right.
I'm just a little concerned about cross-traffic at that single entrance and exit, that it's wide enough to accommodate people that tend to swing their cars wide or driving something big, but still washable.
We don't have a problem making the entrance larger.
Okay.
That was kind of the recommendation that we got back.
Okay, staff?
Staff.
What do you think? Is that wide enough for, I'm just thinking of, particularly four-wheel drives have really wide turning circles, and people tend to swing wide anyway in anything bigger than a Mini.
Yeah, I mean, it's twenty-six foot wide opening, that's what we would typically see for.
It's a two-lane street width.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, it's got enough for people, and at twenty-seven, like the applicant said, a twenty-seven foot, or twenty-seven foot turning radius, I mean, and it's not like they're going to be traveling at a fast speed, I mean, to come out.
Well, if people start playing crunchy fenders, then we'll know it's not why.
It'll be too bad.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got. Second helpings, anyone?
I have one.
Go right ahead.
I do have one more question, if we do plan on, and I really hope that we do, the revitalization of that Laffino Plaza, is there ever any possibility to make that drive going into CJ a two-lane? Is that something that was, has ever been thought about or considered in, for planning purposes?
A drive, the drive.
Widen CJ drive.
Yes, widen CJ drive into a two-lane.
I mean, depending on, I mean, that'd be something we'd look into, you know, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of room down here, I mean, obviously there's no room to widen the road there. I mean, obviously, there's no room to widen the road there.
Right, right.
It would all come from, you know, I kid, I don't have a good picture of that, but, I mean, there would be more area to acquire right away from.
Absolutely.
South side of the road rather than the north. I mean, if that became a huge thing, I mean, that'd be a possibility for.
Okay.
I mean, it's not closed, possibility isn't.
Right, okay. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, anyone else?
I actually do have one more question.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Rickett. If, if I proposed a 15th condition, just putting the onus of traffic control on the applicant, is it enforceable?
That wouldn't be something that, it would be hard for the zoning, the planning and zoning department to enforce traffic movement on a private.
Not traffic, just basically saying, I mean, I was, no traffic shall be allowed to be stopped or idled on CJ traffic while waiting. I mean, I, I just, I really.
That would be something, I mean, that would be something that the cops, the police department would have to enforce and I just, I think that that, on a case-by-case, I mean, that would be.
But if we didn't put that in, they would have no course of action to make them move any of their traffic off the road.
I don't think you can impede traffic on a public right-of-way like that.
Okay, so it would already be covered by, by standard code that we have.
Right, I just don't think that that's something I could do. It's a public right-of-way, I mean.
Perfect.
Gentlemen, other second helping? Fortunately, unlike the previous hearing, we don't have to make sure it's 500 feet away from a church, so we're good on that. Then what I need is a, need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 6-80 MOD 718 MAJOR with the attached 14 conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, a second.
And I have a second. And any further discussion? I'll call for a button.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. We'll look forward to the new business.
We look forward to expanding our business in favor.
It's close to us. We have one more item, gentlemen and Ms. Aker, and that is a decision item and it's a minor mod to the piano preparatory school that we just heard a few months ago.
The case you had before is actually PC 18-6. It's the piano preparatory school minor modification. They're looking to modify the architectural elevations of the building that was approved a few months ago by planning or city council. Projects located at the northwest corner of Indian Ripple and Grange Hall Road. Again, this is a closer-up aerial, the planning commission I'm sure is aware of the location and the fact that it's vacant land, they're looking to put up a piano preparatory and music school on the site. Back when it was approved a few months ago, they were looking at a red brick building with the pitched roof and some flat roof features and all red brick with some white accent stripes. And they've gone through some changes in their products and changes in their plans and came with a more pitched roof that kind of more mimics the slope of the site out there with asphalt shingles and still using red brick but have, using a different color brick and, as an accent feature and some white ephes. The applicant's actually here, and they can maybe explain some more of the, the reasoning behind it a little better than I can, but, you know, staff still recommends approval of this, the proposed changes. There's no public hearing on this, being a minor modification. But again, the applicant's here to answer any questions following the reason. Thanks.
And I should remind you, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I should remind you that this, being a minor mod, we are, we make the decision on this. This is not going to council, is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure y'all, y'all knew that. Thank you for being so patient.
Oh, no problem at all. Thank you for allowing us to come up and, and show you the revised concept, Brian Weaver, ALT Architecture, 2440 Dayton Zine Road, Suite B. As, as staff had mentioned, as we had gone back through after the major mod approval, we had a little more time to reflect with the, with the owner, occupant, and the build team and came to the realization, we had some, some issues with some of the interior spaces. There was a lot of varied geometry in the original concept, kind of every room had angled walls and curved elements. And that was definitely something we wanted to maintain, a very dynamic shape and form to the building, which I think we still have, have been able to achieve. The problem was in some of the support spaces and some of the, the stu, everything from the smaller studios to the larger, sort of the meat and potatoes part of the program, we had too much variability in there. And then additionally, as we talked about the, Randy, can you, can we flip it back to the original elevation real quickly? Thank you, sir. One of the things that's challenging, we, we feel like, we really love that site. It's, it's very unique, has some incredible topography to it, it's really a pretty cool site. So what we wanted to be able to do was make sure that there, that, and it was the original intent as well, we needed to get some height out of the building to really stand up to that corner. It's, it's a little unusual because it's so high on the Indian Ripple side and then so low on the Grange Hall entry side. So the original intent was to try to get as much height out of it as possible. What we ran into was in doing a, a typical roof that has a ridge line like that, the entire structure had to come up in height. And so we had added, a lot of attic space, a lot of additional height in the framing that was creating problems with our mechanical systems. It was just creating, it was sort of a daisy chain of problems. So we kind of took a step back and said, if you want to flip back to, thank you. If, when we looked again at the, at the site, actually spent some time back out on the site, we kind of realized, you know, the pitched roof is the right idea, it just needs to be a single slope roof. And so sloping from low to high allows us to get the height out of the back, still allows us to do the signage. We, we are not proposing any change to any of the, the major mod signage approval. We wanted to stick very closely with the original approved materials, but this allows us to do so in a way that gets us the height on the backside towards Indian Ripple, still gives us more of a pedestrian scale at the, at the entry point. So we have a, we're still able to do, the, the site plan and design is exactly the same, no change to the engineering at all, no change, near as no change to the square footage of the building. And it still fits within a very tight buildable area on the site. So our engineering is exactly the same as it was before. The only modification on, in that is that we were able to remove a couple of retaining walls in the back of the building. As you can kind of see in the elevations, that jagged dark shape at the bottom is indicating that the slope, the site is actually sloping from low to high. So what we're going to do is actually take the foundation walls up a little higher in the back and that allows us to kind of make the building appear as though it's wedged into the site a little more. So we feel like it's actually integrated into the site quite, quite a bit more than the, the more traditional-looking structure that we had before. So overall, the ideas were, were very much in keeping with the original spirit of the design and the, and the materials that were originally approved, we just have a little bit different form. I'm glad to take any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. I'll just throw this open, folks. Questions, comments?
Questions.
Okay. Very dramatic-looking building. I do have a, just a quick question.
Sure.
The, the up slope of the roof, is that the side that faces Indian Ripple?
The up slope is not, so this, this top elevation that you're seeing.
Mm-hmm.
That is actually from the, the Grange Hall entry side.
Okay.
So on the back, and I'm not sure if there's a, if the rear elevation's part of that or not, the rear elevation is actually part of this portion. It's really cool the way it sits in the, the building still is, is kind of a curved shape overall, but the middle section where we have the larger music lab is the section with the larger piece of gla, section of glass right there. The way that it's angled at the site, that actually faces, that portion is actually what faces Indian Ripple. So if you were standing on Indian Ripple perpendicular to the building, that's the corner that you would see. So right immediately next to that is, is a, is the, is the main building signage and then the window that looks into the main performance, the main music lab.
Okay.
The main classroom. So, and that's basically, and lines up, when you look at the top elevation, that's the reason that that roof kind of has a little bit of a jagged shape to it and is extending on beyond. And when we were kicking some ideas around, not to, not to go too, too artsy on you, but that, really what we were trying to do was create something that was, was a little bit off of the shape of kind of the grand piano shape. So we didn't want to do something that was curved. We wanted to say something that was a little angular, it's not a direct, and we're not trying to be, you know, trying to create a direct metaphor or anything like that, but just in terms of inspiration, that's kind of where that came from. So that's what that's gonna allow us to do and that's, that, kind of that little elbow at the top, that's actually what's pointing towards Indian Ripple. So again, when you come in, what's, what's neat about the site is when you come in on the Grange Hall side, you're really low compared to the, the intersection there. And you're gonna come in and come up the drive, so the, the finished floor height on the building kind of splits the difference between the low entry point and the, the intersection. And then down there, you know, again, we're, we're keeping the, the way the original major mod was proposed and approved, we have a rain garden structure that's down there that so all the, all the drainage, site drainage from the property is going down that direction. So we'll be able to do some really nice landscaping and some things like that, so we're really excited about it.
Great, thank you very much. Further comments?
Nope.
Very, very cool design, very cool design. Okay, if there are no more comments, I need a motion. Gentlemen, Ms. Akers?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 18-6 MOD 718 with the attached, that's all. Zero conditions.
Zero conditions, okay.
One condition? Two. One, oh yeah, two conditions.
Two conditions, there we go. Okay. Okay, and once again, we are, this, yays or nays with us. This does not go into council.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion in a second, so it's time for roll call.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries 5-0 and we're looking forward to that building.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward to that site getting something on it.
Pick the wrong month.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, I have a motion.
I will second the motion.
And I have a second and we are.